How are you tonight?
I'm just blessed.
Good, good, good. Well, I've had this a long time for Mr. Bradford and different things have happened in your life and in my life, and I have not been able to get it to him, so I am very pleased to give you a Dukka Paduka because you are a Paduka icon.
I saw.
No. You are an icon and you make Paduka beautiful. So, to all to whom these presents shall come greeting, know ye that Charles Bradford is named a Duke of Paduka. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, and testimony whereof I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affixed, done at Paduka the fifth day of February in the year of our Lord 2013. Gail Kayler, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor Kayler, I'd like to just comment just a minute. It's amazing the difference in the impact an individual can have on a community. And you don't really, you don't share a word of encouragement or a smile to someone that has a frown on their face to get patted on the back. But when life does what it does sometimes, and you're lying on your back and you're looking at a hospital ceiling, and you see the outpouring of well-wishers and prayers coming from your community, it paints a very encouraging picture. And the impact that you've had, and you don't even know this, my youngest daughter McKinley, whenever you would see her downtown and she would, you know, she would always comment on the encouraging words that you have for her, that's made a difference. That's part of her fabric, and you were directly responsible for that part of her life. So, as a father, I truly appreciate you being a role model for my daughter.
And you know, the first time I met Mr. Bradford, I believe it was when I was first running for City Commissioner, and I went up and he was working out off of Forest Circle, and we had a wonderful conversation. And you were always very encouraging to me then, and I really appreciated those words. All right. Our next presentation is Increasing Paduka Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board Membership with Lisa Thompson, PRA Director, and Darlene Mazone, Chair of the Board. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Did you all work that out, or it was in perfect timing?
It wasn't really. My timing's always.
We're practicing. Yeah. And she even wore beige and black in honor of me tonight, so.
That's good.
Yeah, you know. So, we kind of wanted to take an opportunity to sort of also not only educate two of our new board members or commission members about what the Main Street program is, but also everyone at home. So, we're going to give you a little Main Street 101 tutorial. Paduka is very lucky that we actually are an accredited Main Street program by the National Historic Trust. The Kentucky Main Street program is the oldest statewide program in the country. It was established in 1979. There are 37 designated communities in Kentucky that are designated by the Kentucky Main Street program, and of those, 11 are accredited by the National Historic Trust, to which Paduka is one of them. Paduka also in 2010 was the lucky recipient of the Great American Main Street Award, which is a very, very, it's a great honor in the Main Street community to have that award. There are actually about 1,200 Main Street programs throughout the United States. So, our program and the program that we use to help revitalize downtown is a great program, and Paduka's program is a star in that. And so, you ask yourself, well, what about Main Street? Why is Main Street important? What happened to Main Street? This is a photograph, actually, and you can see all the dense buildings that used to occupy our downtown. And if you think about it, you know, when you were young, sometime between the 1950s and the, or the 1850s and the 1950s, everybody went downtown. You went shopping downtown, you went to the doctor downtown. You probably lived downtown, and oddly enough, your kids probably walked to school right around the corner from where you lived. You shopped downtown for all your food, all your clothes. There was a Sears downtown, the Pennies, the Kresge, Walgreens, everything. We had all of these shops right downtown and services to help us. Even on the weekends, it was a great sort of, this is from the Urban Cobb Hotel, you know, people would go downtown, they'd go shopping, they'd walk around, they'd eat, they'd go to the Columbia. I mean, it was a really great thing to do. And downtowns were vibrant. I mean, not only did this, the decline happen to Paduka, but it happened to communities all across the country. So, that was really why the Main Street program decided to step in. So, they created this National Main Street program, and it's a four-step program that's very, it's, I'll let Darlene sort of talk about the mission and everything, so.
I'm learning as well. I am new to this. I joined the Board last year and was asked to be the Chairman of the Advisory Board this year, so I'm in the learning curve as well, although I was a student of Allen Rhodes, and that's just about as good as you can get when it comes, you know, to the Paduka Renaissance Alliance. But Allen has served long and well, as have a number of other people who I think are, you know, they're not tired, but they're probably a little worn after they've done a very good job for a very long time of supporting the program and being a vital part of it. To go on with, excuse me, Lisa's comments about the missions and the goals, the National Main Street program is principally to stimulate economic vitality, but it's also to preserve the historic architecture and the overall ambiance of communities that have a primarily, you know, a Main Street and a historic presence. Here are some of the basic things that we see as goals of the organization, and that is to sustain the district's dynamic and diverse culture, to obviously enhance the district's role in the region as a cultural and entertainment nexus, to strengthen the identity as a place to live, preserve the district's architecture and historic resources, of course, provide transportation and access to all the things that we offer, of course, in these areas, and also to establish some strategies for managing this very special place in our community. The four committees that are broken out of that, and three of those chairmen are with us here this evening. The Organization Group is primarily a volunteer development and a communications PR-type organization as a spinoff of the Board, and also to do some fundraising. The Design Group has principally the education and building improvement, those things that have to do with the public spaces. Economic restructuring, obviously, is, their goal is property development and to maintain, you know, folks in those buildings, in those areas. And then Promotion is our marketing and image development and special event planning and so forth. Of course, we all know that these organizations require a lot of volunteer support. That's like me and these other folks, you know, who have been kind enough to join this Board. And that's where we come to, my suggestion when I joined this group was that we should have more people than are currently involved. There's been a really strong core group of people here. I cannot tell you guys how impressed I've been with what I have heard since I've been on this Board about what these folks have done, and they stepped in, as you well know, over the past few years in some really volatile times for this organization and for the Main Street structure. There've been a lot of changes and a lot of personnel, different changes, and so it's been a bit of a struggle and a challenge, but I think we're at a great place right now. I really am excited. We have someone on Board, we have a staff, there is some energy here. I think there's room for development and energy going forward. So, one of the things that I would like to see is a larger group of people. This is my personal opinion, but I sense at times that people in the community look at the riverfront and historic districts in downtown as something that should be handled by the people who are connected to that, and I have a completely opposite opinion about that. I think that the core of our community, the very essence and heart of who we are in Paduka, has to do with those areas. In our lower town, along the riverfront, in our downtown, that's our personality, that's our draw, that's who we are, that's where we start. It's sort of the hub of everything that happens in the community. So, I think that this Board particularly needs a wide and broad spectrum of representation from all those areas outside of just that particular district, that particular geographic location in the community, and we need to have good representative Board members from all over the community, from different disciplines, socioeconomic areas, professions, expertise, so that we bring a lot of input and information and coordination amongst all of these folks from different places in the community onto the Board. One of the things that is quite interesting, and I think, you know, certainly testifies to this point, is that the average district in these Main Streets that Lisa talked about around the state and around the country consists of maybe seven to eight blocks, a main, you know, a square, let's say, a court square, a Main Street, and the average Board sizes apparently are between nine to 13. Our districts encompass nearly 70 blocks of the city landscape, and of course, currently there is a nine-member Board. Right now, we simply have five people left. Allen stepped down and to join the Commission, so we now need to fill those even. Right now, we just have a core of five people on the Board, but I'd like to see that moved to 15. So, obviously, we have a lot of territory to cover, and we have a lot to do. I think there's a lot of really exciting things that downtown, lower town, the Arts District, the riverfront can move forward towards achieving in the next few years, but I really think that we could use some help on the Board, and that would mean expanding our number. So, we'd love for you to be able to say yes to us, so that we can, in fact, we have kind of invited those, excuse me, those people at this point, and many of them have said they would be very interested in being involved and putting themselves onto the Board to give of their time and effort, and we think that would be great. So, if you can approve that for us, we can go forward, and we would be very happy to do so. Any questions from anyone? For Lisa?
Questions or comments?
So, if I'm understanding what your, what your, what your hopes are from your presentation, you feel that the Board moving forward needs to be, you need more diversity on the Board?
Definitely.
Okay. And these, the people that you're, that you have in mind, I mean, do you have, you have a list of possible Advisory Board members?
Yes, we do have a roster that we have given to Lisa, for committees and for the Advisory Board as well.
And that reflects your diversity?
We think so.
Okay, well, I'd like to, I'd like to see those. So, I may have a couple of folks that would probably like to serve on that Board.
I'll be happy to share it with you.
Okay.
Well, and we would have to do that before we could approve anything like that for next week.
You have to make the ordinance.
Right, right. So, we'll all be able to see those names and.
Yeah, a lot of time.
And tell us again, you know, your reasoning for, you feel like you need those additional folks on the Board. I think at the beginning, didn't we have about 13 for the first Board? And then we changed it, and it went down to nine, and you all have been at five for some time because of different people dropping off the Board, and it just hasn't been filled. So, you've really been working with a very short staff for some time.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a skeleton crew, you know, in terms of the Advisory Board for a while now, so I think we're prepared to go forward, and I think this is a turning point for the organization and the Board, you know, who supports it, to really make some inroads into some goals and some objectives that Lisa has, you know, for the areas.
Okay, so, thoughts from the Commission?
You know, it's as simple as many hands lighten the load. I was on the Board, I would still, if I were not a Commissioner today, I would still be on the Board. I'm committed to it, and I put many hours into it, and happily to do so, and still put a few hours in on, like, cleanup jobs at Smedley Isar two Saturdays ago. Yeah, it's a, it's a good Board. And just so everybody knows, it costs the city absolutely nothing. It's all volunteer labor, so it won't create a budget problem.
I think it's a great idea to have more input from a broader group of people and more support and new ideas, so thank you for presenting it to us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, Mayor, do we have to, do we take like a straw poll?
No.
It just seems we're.
Just a consensus, and then the City Manager can take that and move forward for next year.
I think there's a clear consensus, so we'll prepare the ordinance and put it on your next agenda.
Great.
All right.
Terrific, good.
Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the January 22, 2013 City Commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Okay, we're going to move on to several appointments tonight. Whereas in accordance with Section 114, 293 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paduka, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Roger Truitt to the Commissioner of Waterworks to replace William Robert Johnson, whose term has expired. This term will expire January 6, 2017. And whereas in accordance with the Section 114, 293 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paduka, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Eddie Barker to the Commissioner of Waterworks. This term will expire January 6, 2017. Did I read that right? Commissioner Rhodes.
I believe so. So, the ordinance read, "I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the actions of Mayor Kayler in appointing Roger Truitt and reappointing Eddie Barker as members of the Commissioners of Waterworks."
Second. Any questions? City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. I would just like to say that I really appreciate all the years of service that Robert Johnson has given to the Paduka Water. And during the time that he was on the Water Board, they have built a new treatment plant, an intake assimilated four of the county's five water districts into the system, constructed four new system pumping stations, extended city water into Reedland, and now just completed the construction of a new office building on Eighth Street. So, I wish to commend Robert Johnson and his service on the Water Board. Because of his service, we have seen Paduka Water become one of the system's best and most efficient anywhere in the country. So, thank you, Robert, for all your service. Sure, come on up, Robert.
It's been a pleasure for Mayor and Commissioners, it's been a pleasure for me to be on the Water Board these years. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and all the previous Commissioners and Mayors who appointed and reappointed me, and I especially want to commend the employees and the staff of Paduka Water over the years. Many people don't realize how fortunate they are in the stability and the water company. They've only been, since the time I've been on there, I think we've had two treatment plant managers and three distribution managers and only two general managers, and everyone that's connected with the water, the staff, the managers, and the employees, all have, since my, during my term and even before, I think have treated Paduka Water like it was their own company, and that's why it's been as successful as it has. And I might point out, although we have now about probably twice as many customers and twice the area that we serve, we still have basically the same number of employees. So, I think that tells you about something about the efficiency and the dedication of the employees of Waterworks.
And you know, I know that, Robert, you had a real passion for the water company, and we would often see him out in the field when they would be working on a job, and he would be standing right there observing everything.
Observing is a key word, Mayor. I wasn't doing anything to help, just observing.
But that's, you know, that's what it takes as a Board member. We need Board members that are that involved, and that's what makes our city work. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Whereas, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Ronald Rudolph to replace Carolyn Wood, whose term has expired. To replace Carolyn Wood as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission. This term will expire July 22, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Ronald Rudolph as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission.
Second.
Any questions? City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Whereas, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Rodney Warwick to replace Fred Vowell, whose term has expired, as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission. This term will expire June 4, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the actions of Mayor Kayler in appointing Rodney Warwick as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission.
Seconded.
Any questions? City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Whereas, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Jimmy Rex Smith II to replace Carol Brooks, whose term has expired, as a member of the Brooks Stadium Commission. This term will expire December 5, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in appointing Jimmy Rex Smith II as member of the Brooks Stadium Commission.
Second. Any, I would just like to say, Jimmy, thank you, and I know you're going to be a great addition to the Brooks Stadium Commission. I know your years of being involved in sports and all that you've done on a volunteer basis over there is going to make you a great Board member, and it's going to be between you and Commissioner Abraham. You know, it's going to bring some new life in there, and I know Doc Hattig's happy to have both of you all on there, as a matter of fact. Doc, tell me, you know, what a good job you did the other day, and that he was glad to have you on the Board.
You know what? The pleasure's all mine. I can't wait to get in there and, you know, do what I can do to help.
Do you want to say anything, Jimmy, while you're here? Come on up. It's your time to be a star. Whereas, subject to the approval of the, oh, all right.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Let me, I'm, in case you all think I've lost my mind, and I'm not about being an extemporaneous speaker, but my sheet of paper that I'm to read from, and I read everything that's put in front of my face, it says Mayor Paxton, and I thought, well, I know who the mayor is, and I thought, well, maybe this was done as Bill's last will and testament. I didn't know. It's up here for scrutiny after the meeting's over, you all can see that I didn't.
We thought you just didn't know.
This is, this is for the rookie over here. See, mine said Paxton too, but you got to mark through that.
It's a test, well, I guess I failed. Well, my mother said.
She says everything you read.
Ah, okay, well, glad you had a good laugh.
Whereas, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Beverly McKinley to replace Amy Glasgow, whose term has expired, as a member of the Paduka McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, which term will expire December 31, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Beverly McKinley as a member of the Paduka McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Second.
All right. City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Whereas, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive, I hereby reappoint Mike Berger to the Paduka McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. This term will expire December 31, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the actions of Mayor Kayler and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive in reappointing Mike Berger as a member of the Paduka McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Second. Any questions? City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Once again, I just want to thank all of these people that have so graciously agreed to serve on these Boards because it is all volunteer. So, thank you.
We're going to move on to our motions. Commissioner Rhodes.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Certificates of insurance for J-Ton Commercial Concrete, AST Environmental Incorporated. Certificate of insurance and right-of-way bond for H&amp;H Landscaping. First Amendment to farm lease agreement for Sheehan Bridge Road property. Cancellation notice for City Commission meeting scheduled for January 15, 2013. And then under Engineering Public Works Payment Marking Contract, Bram Striping Company.
Second. Any questions? Corrections? City Clerk. I may just start adding that.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Resolutions. I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Supporting Reforms to the County Employee Retirement System, CERS, to Make the Plan Sustainable, Sound, and Secure for Current and Future Employees," be adopted.
Second.
Want to talk about it? City Manager?
It is not often that I read an entire Agenda Action Form, but when I do, it's pretty important and probably fairly complex, so I'll just do that. The City of Paduka participates in the Kentucky Employee, County Employees Retirement System as a means to provide retirement benefits to its employees. It is well documented that CERS is financially unsound and is in need of reform in order to achieve long-term financial stability. Participation in CERS is not only very important to attracting and sustaining an effective workforce, it is also very costly. Between the years 2007 and 2012, the required annual contribution rate for the city for CERS increased by 33% for hazardous duty employees and by 48% for non-hazardous duty employees. For employees paid from the city's general fund, and that's just a portion of our workforce, total annual expense over that period grew from 2.7 million to 3.9 million. This stark increase in costs would have been higher had the employee count for the general fund not dropped from 308 to 283 employees over that same five-year period. With the current plan being unstable and unsustainable, the upward trend in annual cost for the city will only continue, and the reliability of the plan for its employees will continue to decline. Without reform to the plan, it is quite likely that the City of Paduka would be faced with undesired workforce and service slash program reductions in order to meet the rise in costs of the plan. So, we recommend tonight that the City Commission pass a resolution requested by the Kentucky League of Cities for a set of recommendations that is before the General Assembly this session. The set of recommendations reflects the worse, the work of the task force on public pensions that was created by the General Assembly last year. The specific components of the recommendations of the task force include, one, adoption of a hybrid cash balance plan for new CERS employees, emphasis on new. Two, reset the amortization period for CERS unfunded liability to new 30-year period. Three, eliminate automatic cost of living adjustments for employees and retirees. Four, add a Kentucky League of Cities recommended appointee to the Board, excuse me, the Retirement Board of Trustees.
And recommend that the Board of City Commissioners adopt the attached resolution encouraging the General Assembly to enact the recommended reforms during the 2013 regular session. Any discussion? City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
We'll go on to municipal orders. Commissioner Wilson.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paduka order that the personnel changes on this attached list be approved.
I send you.
Second.
Want to talk about it?
Hey, Mayor, Commissioner, we've have before you lots of activity, a lot of it centered in the Fire Department. We've been working hard partnering with the Fire Department on promotions. There are seven of these listed in the Fire Department that are promotions. I'd like to highlight three of those for you. Jeff Montgomery to Assistant Fire Chief, and two captain promotions, Barry Knight and John Husky. And when we do that, operationally, we need to assign. And when we do that, operationally, we need to assign backup and acting positions in the first, second, and third positions in some cases. So, what you see in that surrounding activity is a lot of those acting naming.
City Manager, do you have anything?
As Cindy said, a lot of activity representing, you know, some turnover and the need for promotion to fill the ranks. Will you answer any questions? Fire Chief is here tonight as well, if you would have any. Do you want to make any introductions, Chief?
Yes, I would respectfully ask that I give an opportunity to do that once the passage of the promotions goes through, I'll bring it back and introduce the details.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any discussion here? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute" An Application for the Parks Services Department to apply for a grant in the amount of $7,500 from the National Recreation and Parks Association to be used for the city's community garden, be adopted.
Second.
Mark?
Mayor Commissioners, this is working to upgrade our community gardens that we already have at the acreage on, at 13th, between 13th and 14th. And it's, we've had this, this will be the, this summer will be the third summer that we've had this. And this will allow us to upgrade them, to elevate them, to really improve the gardens. We're also working with our after-school program that we now have at the Paducah Recreation Center, the PRC. Will be involved in it and also working to donate a portion of the results to local charity. So, I also know that Commissioner Abraham has been a, the family have been successful users of the gardening, community gardens. And so, it's one of those things that really helps make a community special.
There's just one thing, one problem with the garden. It's not big enough. I was thinking more of a truck patch.
I understand. We've got to get people to use this, and so the improvement, then we'll keep expanding. We do have room for that.
And how large are the, each plot?
Twenty-by-twenty's, I think.
Twenty-by-twenty? And did, were all of them used last year?
No, they were not. We had about half of them that were still available last year.
Do you think we didn't get the word out enough, or?
I think the word's out on the street. It's just we need to get people to do it. But I think also, this will help with the amount of soils and getting more topsoil in. You know, we had, we've had to use a lot of fertilization and things like that because the clay-based soil that we've had in that area, the old buildings that were there, we had to remove a lot of that. So, it's not the absolute richest soils. So, this will help out a whole lot.
Okay. I know that there's a lot of people around town that are interested in doing community gardens right now. And I know that, doesn't Oscar Cross Boys and Girls Club have a little garden?
They have one up in their front yard. They sure do. That's a good size and they've got a lot of involved kids there that are there all summer. And so.
Lisa, does Farmers Market or PRA work with community gardens, any?
So, Mark, there's no fee?
We charge $10 is basically what we've charged in the past. And even last year, when we had not filled them, if there were folks who wanted to come in, we offered them up for the remainder of that summer for no fee at that point.
So, they're given some land and they can grow whatever they want to there for their garden, well, legal for their garden.
Chief doesn't want anything.
And we don't want any problems there, but.
But yes.
I hope that we fill it up and we need more land. I think it's great.
We have other sites and it's in the master plan that's being worked on right now. We call for an expansion of that, too.
Okay, you want to, you want to do a one-uppens garden where I grow bigger tomatoes than you?
Uh, sure. I had an interesting conversation with a young man about, we were at the community garden and I think, I think Carol had a, had a spot of land and there was corn growing there. And so, this kid, he was asking these questions, like, what's that, what's that? I said, he goes, what's that right there? I said, that's corn. He goes, where? Right there. I said, I don't see any corn. No, this is what it looks like before they put it in the can. Right there. And it was, it's a great tie-in.
It is.
With younger, younger folks growing up, you know, you see cows, corn, whatever. Now, some of these guys, they never see it growing from the ground. So, that's, that was, I totally enjoyed that conversation. It was, no, that's corn, man. Really.
Exactly. And that's a good thing with our after-school program and it'll continue on through our summer day camps and playground program that we can continue working through that. So, work could continue.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay, on sort of the same vein, I move that a municipal ordinance entitled, "A Municipal Ordinance Approving the Sale of Real Property" Located 833 South Fifth Street, Foring in Consideration of $50, to Julianne Rose, be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
This is just a continuation of the reduction of our surplus properties, which has been ongoing for several years. We have one person that is proposing to utilize this for a private garden. She currently already has one property on South Sixth Street. If you take a tour of their existing one, she has several raised beds and a couple of fruit trees. She grows during the summertime and then gives it away to neighbors in the community.
And back on the campaign trail, I knocked on this lady's door and she took me for a tour of the gardens and explained all about it and said she'd be back again this year to get more land, or at least she wanted to. So, here we go.
That's great.
Good project.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under ordinance's adoption, Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Lease Modification Agreement Between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Finance and Administration Cabinet Department for Facilities and Support Services, Division of Real Properties in the City of Paducah for Lease of Property for the Department of Corrections, Probation, and Parole Located at 400 South Sixth Street." The ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby approves the modifications contained in the Commonwealth of Kentucky Lease Modification Agreement dated December 5th, 2012, PR Number 4096, McCracken County for the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Corrections, Probation and Parole, and the City of Paducah for property located at 400 South Sixth Street, Paducah, Kentucky. The annual rent is in the amount of $72,093 and will be paid on a quarterly basis. Further, the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute the lease modification agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? This is an introduction, so we do not, no, this is an adoption. All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, now we go to introduction and we do not vote on these. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Declaring Municipally-Owned Real Property Held for the Use and Benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah (DBA), Paducah Water as Surplus and Approving the Transfer to the Hindren Fire Department pursuant to Section 2668 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances." This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah declares the real property located at the intersection of Brawls Avenue and AT Massa Drive, formerly known as Old Mayfield Road in Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, and acquired by the city for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah (DBA). Paducah Water, in Paducah, Waters' acquisition of the asset of the Hindren Water District's surplus property and approves its transfer without consideration and authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for the use and benefit of Paducah Water to execute and deliver a quickclaim deed of conveyance of the surplus property to the Hindren Fire Department, a McCracken County Fire Protection District created pursuant to KRS 75.010, a politically subdivision and government agency of McCracken County, Kentucky.
Second.
Lynn, do you want to talk about this? Good use of property that we can no longer use?
It is a good use of property. I have a, there are a couple of members of the Hindren Volunteer Fire Department here, their chief, Steve Hayden. And if you'd like to ask them questions, they're available for that as well. When we negotiated Hindren Water District becoming a part of Paducah Water, one of the negotiated items was the office property that the Hindren Water District occupied. It has an office building on it and in the back it has a garage. And it was determined that they would like to see it have a community use in the Hindren community if we didn't have a use for it. We determined we did not have a use for that property. I have talked with the County Judge Executive, I've talked with Jerry Byer, who lives and represents that area in the county fiscal court, and Ronnie Freeman on the county fiscal court was also on the Hindren Water District Board. They all agree that that's a good use for the property and support the transfer of it. And so, what we're doing here tonight is really following through with the commitment we made to the Hindren Water District Board to give that to a community for its use. And the Hindren Fire Department would like to move their headquarters there and use that property for that purpose and for community purposes that the Hindren Fire Department would use there in that community.
That's great. Great use of the property.
That's what we're doing. We think it's a good use. It's a good use for the Hindren community, which we serve now. We want to be good stewards of that service. And so, we want to do that as well as follow through with the commitment that we made as the Paducah Water to the Hindren Water District Board at that time. So, we thank you for doing that.
Any discussion, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Brim Striping Company, Incorporated", for the City of Paducah's Paving Marking Program for the remaining portion of the 2013 calendar year and for the 2014 calendar year ending December 31st, 2014. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Brim Striping Company for the City of Paducah's Paving Marking Program for the remaining portion of 2013 calendar year and for the 2014 calendar year ending December 31st, 2014, at the unit prices below, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Any discussion? It's pretty cut and dried every time we, I see this every year. I know that spring's on its way.
Yeah, it's a good sign.
All right, City Manager, do you have a report tonight?
I am simply going to report that we have an executive session for economic development purposes following the meeting.
Okay. Commissioners, did you have anything wonderful happen this week for you?
Yes, I have a new granddaughter. And I am so excited. It's all those Barbie dolls and dress up and I'm so excited. It's, I can't wait. My grandson, you know, for nine months, has been talking to his mom's belly, wanting to know when Charlie Teigen was coming. And then, when she finally got here, he didn't want hardly anything. He's looking at it like, what is that? So, I think he's warming up to her, though. So, and I thank you guys for your text messaging back. It was, it was nice. So, we're excited.
I saw your son-in-law at the hospital this afternoon and congratulated him. He seemed to be pretty happy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we're happy. Family's growing.
Anyone else? I know the City Manager has some wonderful news, don't you?
Oh, yes. The South Dakota State Jackrabbits are coming to play at Murray State later this month. No, that's not what she was.
That's not what I was.
I'm from South Dakota, so I do take interest in that. But I think the mayor's referring to the fact that my family, good news this week. My son, who's 26-years-old, works for the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in the Economic Development Office, has become a new city manager as of last night. So, very proud of that.
Let's give him a hand. All right. Well, I had a wonderful week. Just, there were so many wonderful things that happened to me this week. I can't even begin to tell you. So, it just makes me happy.
I would congratulate the new, the hospital with the new name, Western Baptist is now Baptist Health Paducah. So, I'm glad to have Paducah in their name. It'll show Baptist Health on the side. But congratulations to them. They had a nice ceremony this afternoon.
Attractive new marquee that's on the side on the Kentucky Avenue side.
Alan, I stayed.
We launched the balloons. We covered you.
Right. And of course, you know, they're one of our biggest employers in the city, so.
So, congratulations to them.
Absolutely. Okay, well, we will not be making any decisions. We will not have anything to come back and report from the executive session. So, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.
I have a motion. I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. So, we're adjourned.